Call the work session to order and I will turn it over to Dr. Lewis and to get us started.
Yes.
Thank you, Board President Kimball. Good evening to other board members and members of the community. Couple of board meetings ago, our board asked for a more in-depth report and look at how we're currently spending our title funds. And so tonight, what Patrick Kelly will walk you through is all of our current title programs, what they mean, where some of our money is going, and then also present some options. There were some conversations around what would it look like at the middle or the secondary level if we were to allocate title funds at those levels? So Patrick will walk you through what that may potentially look like. Patrick?
And before, Patrick, I'm sorry to interrupt. Before you get started, I just wanted to share that Kay is participating virtually. Kay, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. We're ready to roll.
Awesome. Thank you. And, okay.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Patrick Kelly, Chief Academic Officer, and as Dr. Lewis said, I'm going to walk you through the title services funding overview requested. To start with, there are a number of different title programs. When we say title, we mean a lot of things. The one that many of us are familiar with is what we would call Title I Part A, which is specifically for those students who live in poverty. So they are on free and reduced lunch. Title I Part D is for those students who are neglected or delinquent. So that includes somewhat homeless, but mostly foster care. Title II A is our effective instruction. Most of our dollars for that go to professional development. We do use some dollars in that to reduce class size. Title III Part A is language instruction for English language learners. Some of us know that as ESOL. We don't really actually have enough, what would qualify as immigrant students in that one. We use most of the dollars here for AVID, and that sometimes surprises people to say like, how is AVID ESOL? But our dollars in Title III that fund AVID are for a specific instructional strand around ESOL. So it is AVID, but it is ESOL. That's how we use those dollars. And Title IV Part A has three different area requirements. We put a little bit of money into technology, and then the rest of the dollars go into things like our restorative practices work or our work with EOS, Equal Opportunity Schools, to increase the opportunities for APRE classes for our, for certain populations. And then our equity work is in Title IV as well. Any questions on those different funds? Okay. There are also state-level programs, which sometimes it gets confusing because some of these double up some of the things you see in titles. So there's homeless McKinnney Vento Funds that come from the state. There's ESOL bilingual state funding, and then there's what we call at-risk funding. There's a number of factors that we set our at-risk money around, and we look at the number of students who meet those at-risk factors and then allocate dollars based on those at-risk factors. Kansas at-risk dollars also have to be used for specific best practices in the district. And that comes from KSD. Questions on those state funds?
I do have a question. So McKinnney Vento is a federal statute, but we don't get funding from the feds for that. We get funding from the state.
From the state, yes, that's correct.
Is that how the federal statute specifies it has to be done, or is it that our state has just chosen to do it that way?
I don't totally know. I can find that out for you, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Thank you.
In Title I Part A, there are two types of schools. One is a targeted population, and that means that they must have 35% of children who are from low-income families. Those schools who have targeted assistance, we can only work with those kids who need that assistance. And we have to keep track of the services that are provided for each one of those kids. We cannot do things school-wide. So when we think about purchasing materials or even staff with Title I Part A targeted schools, we can only buy materials that those students would use. No one else in the school can use them, only those students who fall in that 35%. Last year, we had three schools that were targeted. The rest were school-wide. This year, all of our schools are over that 40%, and we're applying to be school-wide because when they're over the 40% threshold, we can operate school-wide programs. It's a much more effective, easier way to serve kids. But there are also some more hoops that you have to dump through. We have to use something called IndeStar or Kansas Star, which actually is an improvement plan. So it's just more steps, but more flexibility.
Patrick, this is, sorry, Dr. Kelly, this is Kay. I had a quick question there. With that particular note, why do we have more schools that are 45% in one year time? Do we have any information on the why on that?
On why the percentages of free and reduced lunch students are what they are at the different schools? Is that what you're asking, Kay?
Yeah, it sounded like there was an increase from last year to this year on that. I might have heard that incorrectly, but that's what I thought I heard.
Yeah, I think there would be lots of factors that influence the number of students who are living with low-income families. I think we all can think about COVID and make our own assumptions about what caused families to go below that threshold that may need that. I don't really know without talking to each family why we would have a higher percentage of students from low income.
Okay, no, it's just helpful to know that we have a larger percentage of families with low income now than we did when we looked at it last year. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd have to look at that. I think what we look at is the percentage of families, not the total. I'd have to ask Jan or Cindy maybe to run whether that was the total number of students versus the percentage of students. When I go to some of the charts, you'll sort of see what I'm talking about there. So I put this graphic together to sort of explain how the different fundings stack. We actually don't apply for our title funds. We get an allocation, but we don't have to do what's called our local consolidated plan or our LCP until the end of September. One of the reasons for this is we need to set our general budget, what everybody gets, consistent funding first, and then add these other funds to that, right? We can't supplant general funds with federal funds, and it's very specific that title funds need to address at-risk students. So what you see there is that big blue bar would be the general funding that comes from state and local sources and that you all will be setting in the next couple of meetings, right? Then we take that at-risk funding that comes from the state, and we layer that over top based on the number of students who meet those at-risk factors, and then we add title on top of that. So we can't use title funding instead of at-risk money. Does that make sense? We have to move that at-risk money around. This doesn't represent the actual school. I was just trying to give you a picture of what this looks like. So, any questions on that?
So to clarify, the gray is the depiction of the title funding that you're kind of putting on top of the at-risk funding, which is at different levels.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And you'll see even in some times, we have schools that have higher at-risk populations than numbers of students in poverty. It just, it sort of just depends. We have a lot of factors that go into that at-risk calculation. And I can send you those if you want to know what those factors are. It's about 12 different factors. So this chart here, I'm going to walk you through each column on how it works. This is our current practice for how we fund our title elementary schools. You'll see the school in the first column and the percentage of students in poverty at that school. And you'll see then we gave it a rank. So New York has the highest number of those in poverty. That's ranked number one. And Cordley is the lowest, and that's ranked number eight. Then we have to go through and we have to allocate dollars. We get a set allocation from the state. We have to allocate those dollars to make sure that our per pupil allocation is higher for the one that ranks number one than number eight, right? So it's putting your money in the place most needed, and it's by the total percentage of students. Then you take that allocation, you multiply it by the number of students you have, and there ends up with your allocation. So you could see in a school like Hillcrest, the actual dollars they get are higher than in New York, even though they're ranked lower. I'm going to pause there as you sort of look at that chart. Yep.
Can you talk about how school size impacts those? I just have been wondering about it and trying to figure out that equation myself. Can you talk how that impacts it?
Yeah, so I think the larger the school size, you know, I mean, you just sort of do the math there backwards. Hillcrest is a larger school than New York, so the number of students. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I got that part. That part, that piece I could get. But what I was trying to determine is if school size, if you have more schools, if you have to spread, is there any, because you do it per pupil, it wouldn't matter the school size, correct? Even though, I mean, even though I'm recognizing Hillcrest has more, but that's just because they have more students. I'm just trying to understand if the district has, we have a large number of smaller schools, and I was just wondering if that has an impact on how we allocate those dollars?
How we allocate the, so-
If you consolidate it, you might have, for example-
Yeah, the allocation wouldn't be any different.
Okay.
Right, the allocation, you just look at, it's, it's the math formula. How they use those dollars at the building may be different depending if it's a larger or smaller school.
Okay. Thanks.
That answer your question?
It does. Well, I, it wasn't out of great question, but I wanted to be vulnerable enough to ask.
Well, and one of the things you might look at is you might look at the staffing column, the far-right staffing column. So I, we have hired staff with these title dollars in mind already. So you see different buildings hiring different amounts of staff based on their need. We don't give them a formula. We say, hey, how many would you like to have for intervention staff? Typically, they have a halftime parent involvement facilitator. That's something that is required for school-wide buildings. So I think there might be examples of if you had two buildings together, they may use that a little bit differently. Yeah.
You might just need one parent coordinator as opposed to duplicating that across multiple buildings?
Yeah, that'd be correct.
Okay.
But you do have more parents to serve, so-
So you might have a-
Yeah, I think that's what you just have to-
Recorder time or full-time instead of halftime?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So if there's no questions here, I'll go to the next slide, which shows an option. We've had questions about what would happen if we added our middle schools, and there's a couple of options we have. One option is we include all of our schools in the same band. So we would say any school that is 35% or over would get title funding and based on the allocation. You'll see here that Liberty Memorial Central is at 44%, and they would be the fourth school in that ranking. And that Billy Mills, you'll notice, is over 35%, but below 40%. So they would be targeted. And then you can see the number of students and how each of that, those dollars would pan out. Then you will also see over on the far right, the debits that we would have because we get a set allocation from the state. We don't get more money if we start claiming our Liberty students and our Billy Mills students. We just have to divide the pie up more, and so you can sort of see how that impacts. And so you can see it'd be almost a reduction of one FTE to each of those buildings if we did that.
And that's because, okay, so to go back to your pie, that's because when the state is calculating our allocation, they're not looking at, they're not looking at this building by building. They're look at, they're looking at the number of free lunch students in the district as a whole. So they have already counted all the kids in middle school and high school in determining the money they give us in the first place, right?
Yeah, I would be cautious of oversimplifying the formula. They don't count up the total number. There's census formulas and things like that that get to their allocation.
Okay.
We could get some information on that if you like, but I want to make sure it's not just a matter of counting up how many kids we have, and that's our allocation. It's complex, and I can get it for you. I just need to note that that's something that would be helpful.
I guess what I was trying to get, to get at is they've already taken into account the entirety of our student body, K through 12, pre-K through 12.
Yes, we get a district-wide allocation.
And then they say, this is the amount of money you have. You get to decide where you're spending it based on some rules and parameters.
Right.
Okay.
So that's one option we have. Another option we have is we can split out the two levels. So we can say there's a level that's elementary and rank them that way, and then we can do middle school and do it that way. Just so everyone knows, neither of our high schools would qualify as a Title I school. That's why we're not including them. And then we could work backwards. There's a minimum allocation you have to make to if a building you decide to put in the mix, and that's $652, and then we'd have to go up one level from that. So that's how we got to that $662. And you can see how those numbers play out. So that's another way that we could do it. But I just wanted you to see the impacts on our elementary buildings if we choose to do this. There may be positive impacts, more resources available at our middle schools, but it will change what happens to our elementary schools. Do you have any questions?
In the, in, first of all, that was really helpful. Thank you. In fact, it's one of, it answered a lot of questions I've had for a while, so I really appreciate how that was put together in your presentation. What I'm wondering about in terms of the, both the benefit to the middle school and the consequence to the elementary school, has ELT discussed the timing around both we need to address issues at the middle school level, and we also have some unique initiatives happening at most of our elementary schools right now? So the reduction in staffing could be an additional burden on top of some of the new shifts we saw following this year. Can you talk a little bit about what recommendations, where you see the benefits, how you think that might benefit the middle school, and where you think there might be significant concerns at the elementary level? If we move to like option two or three, where we decided that we do need to utilize some of the title dollars at the middle school level, and so really clear from looking at those charts that you could be, it would impact the elementary staffing?
So some of the things that we, I think it'd probably be helpful to understand some of the things that we do with that title funding. And then we could apply that to the middle school, and then if we made that change, we would have less at the elementary school, less of that at the elementary school. So one of the things we do is we lower class size by having a title-funded teacher at that school, right? So we could at the middle school add staff that could lower class sizes. That's one thing we do. Sometimes we use title teachers more as, for interventions. So they'll work with groups of kids who are struggling at certain levels. That was especially true in our targeted schools, right? Because we had a specific population of students that we could work with, and only that that we could work with. I already mentioned parent involvement facilitators. That's another way we've used it. We have spent money on learning coaches in that space, so especially as we reduce the dollars that were available for learning coaches as part of budget reductions, some title buildings said, I think that's enough of a value to my building that I would increase the learning coach FTE. So, for example, if Liberty Memorial decided we put those dollars towards Liberty Memorial and one of those other options, we can increase the number of learning coaches there if we thought that was the best thing. But it would mean we'd have to decrease it somewhere else, right? And not necessarily learning coaches, just overall funding. Am I answering your question, Kelly?
You are. And I guess the, and this will be, and then I'll stop and give space to other folks. For me, looking at it, I can understand philosophically why we made the decision to keep it at the elementary level because the early interventions and the research related to that bear a lot of fruit, we would hope, for the children that they're working with. And particularly, when you talk about class size, there's data that suggests that most important at early age. Is that accurate representation? It's okay if it's not. I would rather you tell me.
I would say there's conflicting, you know, there's not one research report that's right.
Okay, I appreciate that. So I'm wondering if we may, are there other districts that, is it common for nearly every, most, do most districts keep the dollars primarily at the elementary level, or is it common to see those dollars spread out into the middle school? Do you know that?
I don't really know. I mean, I might turn to Cindy if she knows. We could certainly- Yeah. So what she said, for those of you watching at home, okay, for what she's seen, yes, that is common. But, you know, Topeka, for example, uses it for high schools, middle schools, elementary schools. I think different school, districts just choose to use it differently.
But Topeka gets substantially more.
Substantially more, yes.
We do, right? For a similar, somewhat similarly sized district, they're like orders of magnitude more title funding than we do because of their student population.
Right.
Kelly, I want to make sure we, did we get-
I was trying to open it up for other folks.
Okay, right. Other questions?
Yeah, so Kelly did a great job teeing up a lot of my questions. So how long has the district been doing option or the current practice?
I do not know the answer to that, but I would feel confident saying it's been at least a decade, the way we've been doing it this way.
At least a decade, okay. And then my follow-up question, Kelly already asked it, just really wanted to know the history of the rationale behind that, and was it rooted in a database decision?
Yeah, typically, we think we can make the biggest gains at that elementary. We want to get kids reading as soon as possible. So putting those funds, typically, we see our elementary students come in with large learning deficits. That's not saying that we don't have challenges at our middle schools. We are talking about reallocating some ESER funds for some additional supports at both Billy Mills and at Liberty Memorial. I think to address some of the concerns that you're talking about, Kelly, we're seeing some of that in our data. But that is a finite amount of dollars for a finite amount of time, and we have to be thinking about that. If we wanted to make a change to this, we could not make a change this year because of the way the funding, we already have contracts in place. But we could look at something different next year. But I, I think to answer your question, Erica, I, I do think that our strategy has always been, let's get them early on, put the dollar, most of those title dollars early on into the system so that we can really build those kids up as they go through, through their educational careers.
So if you're going to tie that back to our strategic plan focusing on that third-grade reading goal-
Mm-hmm, yeah.
-pretty heavily, I have a follow-up question to the question you asked. Okay. It ties into my question. So if, if we do continue to believe that targeting those title funds to the elementary level is the best approach because of that, and you touched on this a little bit, maybe there are some other things. Are there other changes that we can make to our operations that would enhance or maximize, you know, the supports that we are able to provide at that middle school level if we're not going to spend title dollars there? And you said you're thinking about ESER funds. Are there other, are there other things that we're talking about? I know that's been part of Kelly's concern is the, the needs at that level and whether we're able to meet them.
I mean, we also, we talk about the third grade level. We also talk about the eighth grade level as well.
Right, the eighth grade math goal.
And I certainly acknowledge that the work you do at the early age probably gets you where you want to go at the eighth grade, eighth grade level. But thinking about where we're seeing the need as it relates to student experience, it does seem that the data that the board has seen indicates that we need to consider the possibility that perhaps now is the time to look at shifting how we utilize title funding because there are some critical concerns. So I don't want to do it at the expense of a third grader. So I would be interested, similar to what Shannon is saying, in, you know, how do we spend a year looking at and gathering information from other staff around a firm recommendation from you all about what you'd like to see in terms of how the dollars are spent in the subsequent year? What would be the timeline for making that decision?
So we would typically decide that in the early spring, right, when we start thinking about hiring teachers. All of our title teachers know that it may not be there next year, that if you take a title-funded position, that allocations could drop, numbers could drop, and this position will no longer be filled.
Sure. We will definitely have another position open for a teacher. I'm positive.
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
This is Carol. And also, I think we, we as a board need to consider that Brook and Arrow and Hillcrest are part of the Apollo redesign. And that wasn't, you know, that was postponed due to COVID, but it was launched last year. So maybe, I don't know, that's something that we should also consider with, with the funding.
Yeah, we, we don't get any funding for redesign.
Just the way they redesign and the way they, the different learning styles.
Yeah. I think, you know, we do give a lot of autonomy to our principals, speaking of redesign, and they're building leadership teams. To think about the best way to use these title dollars in their buildings, I certainly appreciate that. I mean, I think that's the right thing to do because they know the learners they have. We do provide some district supports, but that number of supports has decreased because we put more dollars into buildings this year than any district-level support for title.
Go ahead, Paul. This is just a comment. And we could talk about this after too, but just to, I'm curious about the Title VII-A funds for Indian education. How we are not only using that, I know those funds go into Native American Student Services, but how would that look and fit into serving those students outside of that? Just, we can talk about that later. I know that's not part of this presentation, but it was something that came up after the fact, going through the PowerPoint.
Sure, yeah. We definitely can get you some more information on that if you like, how those funds are allocated, who those funds are to serve.
So I'm going to ask a slightly different question, which is, I know that we look at the percentage of poverty in our buildings to decide which buildings get title funds. I also know that in the past, we have had buildings with substantially more high-need students in them, but because those are big buildings, they don't qualify for any title funds. Should we be considering changes, and I don't know what that would look like, to support students in those buildings that don't get title funds now, who, I mean, they're, they're generating title funds for our district because they qualify, but they're not, we're not spending any of our title funds on them. So I'm kind of wondering about that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could, we do have to have, in order to access title funds, you have to have an even keel essentially on your general funds, right? You can't be moving the numbers around on general funds to compensate, right? So- So if you know this is a title building, you can't lower the number in a title building and raise the number in a non-title building and make up the difference, right? So that everything is equal, right? I think the at-risk dollars are one of the ways, because the really nice thing about that is we look specifically at how many at-risk students do you have based on these qual, and free and reduced is one of the qualifiers there. How many at-risk students do you have in your building? And those dollars go to that building for at-risk. We probably can do a better job of letting our principals know what things we're using at-risk dollars for and which things we're not. Because I think sometimes, we have to wait for the kids to get here to look at the, so it's sort of backwards. But, yeah, I don't know if that answers your question, Shannon, or?
It sort of does. I mean, you know, because, like, something that I would wonder about based on what you just said is, okay, so we get those at-risk dollars and we allocate those across the buildings, and then a school like New York is probably getting title funds stacked on top of those at-risk dollars, but a school like Sunflower that has probably more at-risk students than attend New York as a whole, get no title funds.
Right.
And so I just, I don't know if there's any way to really effectively.
Right. So if you had a school of two, right, you'd automat, and you had one of those students was free and reduced, you'd automatically get that title funding, right? But it'd be a very small amount, right? And what I hear you saying is if I have a larger school, like maybe our high schools, they still have a need there. There are still students who title qualify, but the building itself doesn't qualify for title funding. And that's hard, yeah. Because you can see the need there, and how are we allocating dollars based on that need?
Because I know I've heard staff say in years past that Sunflower came fairly close to being a targeted building based on percentage, but that would mean 30% of 500 kids, you know?
Yeah.
Couple hundred kids.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
This is Kay. I had a question. And you touched on it just a little bit in the dialogue. It goes back to the timing, right? So as you kind of talked about, if there are going to be changes, typically, this conversation would happen in the spring. We know that we can't necessarily make any immediate changes. This is more of the long-term forecast planning. So my question gets to the when. When do we go about, as a board, like, making this type of decision as we are in the midst of having this budget conversation? When I think about spring, I feel like in our current conversation, spring is too late. So where does this play out as we are looking ahead?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I would caution. Are you asking, Kay, if in your discussions around budget, you know, would you want, are you wanting to have these, are you thinking that we would make a change before your budget decisions? Trying to understand the timeline.
Yeah, so, no. I wouldn't, that is not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that this is part of the many pieces that we're going to be discussing, right? And so I feel like this may be something, a part of that discussion. And if we are talking about potentially making changes, no matter whatever the changes is, or just staying the same, you know, that should be part of our ongoing conversations on budget. I'm not quite sure. And so I was hoping that I could get your expert opinion on it.
Yeah, the timing of it is pretty, that's sort of why I went over that colored chart and about when you have to make those decisions. We actually use carryover because what we're actually paying last, this year's teachers for is last year's. But, I mean, it gets really technical and when you can draw down federal funds and all that stuff. So that's one reason that administration has usually made that decision. We'd love some input from you all, but we typically make the decision on how to use that based on looking at our schools, what their needs are, what the data tells us.
Well, and we're also kind of constrained by the supplant, supplement, not supplant rules, right? Like, we can't make budget decisions based on title funding because we have to make those budget decisions the same for everybody before we ever put the title dollars into play, right?
Yeah, and it just so happens this year, we used Title II A dollars to cover quite a bit of professional development, but we had to get approval from the state to show proof that there was a budget cut so that we weren't supplanting those dollars, right? And if we could show that it was a cut of the budget, then we could use federal dollars for it.
Okay. So really, it helps you if we don't include them in the mix?
Yeah, we have to be really careful with federal funds and making sure that we don't put you in a spot to say, well, we're going to eliminate this and use federal funds instead.
Because we're not supposed to do that.
Yeah.
Okay. That's helpful clarification. Thank you.
As a, for me, for my, I would not want to take this off the table as we're waiting to see how different interventions we're trying progress at the middle school level, what decisions we make around boundaries or the number of buildings we have, all those components that will come together in, at the top of spring. I certainly would want to continue to have this as a conversation or a consideration and wouldn't want to just shut it down. That would, that's where I'm at, and so I don't know where others are at, but.
Kelly, this is Kay. I appreciate you bringing this, continuing to bring this to the forefront in the discussion. So I hear you, is what I'll say. I hear you, and I agree.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Patrick?
Thank you. I think this has been really helpful to understand an area that everybody talks about but probably doesn't have the full picture oftentimes of what all the constraints are and the requirements. So it's really helpful to understand that better. Okay, we're going to be in recess until we start our regular meeting at 6:00 PM. I'd like to remind everybody in the room that if you wish to sign up for public comment, you need to do so before 6:00 PM, and please see Elise Donnell for the form. Thank you.
To order the August 22nd, 2022 Board of Education meeting. For the safety of all those in attendance, display of signs or banners will not be permitted. Tonight's meeting is a meeting of the Board held in public, not a public hearing with or discussion with the Board. Patrons will be invited to share comments as part of the public comment portion of the meeting as outlined in Board Policy BCBI. That time is set aside on the Board's agenda for members of the public to share their thoughts. It is not a time for dialogue with or a question and answer session with the Board. Patrons who wish to participate in public comment must fill out the public comment form so that district staff or the Board can follow up with you regarding your public comment as necessary. If your comments require follow-up from the Board or district staff, that will occur after tonight's meeting. The District assumes no responsibility or liability for the information shared during public commentary. The views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Lawrence Public Schools. Please be respectful of the presenters and the Board as we discuss and deliberate the issues and topics on tonight's agenda. Comments or actions that are disrespectful of presenters or disruptive of the Board's discussions and deliberations, use of foul language, or threats to the Board or others in attendance will result in immediate removal from the meeting. In addition, USD 497 provides public access to our Board's meetings through live stream. The platform used for this live streaming has acceptable use rules for content on its website. While the District does not delete or hide Board meeting videos, the streaming platform may elect to do so if the content of public comment or any other portion of the meeting is found to violate the platform's acceptable use rules. Thank you very much for your cooperation in these areas. At this time, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda, please?
This is Carol. I move we approve the agenda for the August 22nd, 2022 Board meeting.
Is there a second?
Just Erica, a second.
Kimball?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kudub Blackwood?
Yes.
Emerson Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. We do not have any special recognition this evening, nor do we have any retirements to recognize, so I'd like to move on to the report of the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Lewis.
Thank you again, Board President Kimball. Good evening again, everyone that's here and person and those that may be watching online. You know, doing my superintendent's report, this provides me an opportunity to highlight and showcase many of the amazing things that are going on in our district. I have an opportunity to highlight staff, have an opportunity to highlight students, and it's all good news that we share with our community. Well, tonight I have some even more amazing news that I am so excited to share with the public this evening. The District currently has more than 100 postings on our website for our classified positions. I am pleased tonight to announce that through the use of our Federal Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, which we call ESR funds, to support early childhood educational services and before and after school care enrichment for the children of new and existing classified employees. As you know, classified staff workers are paraeducators, instructional support staff, food service and custodial personnel, secretarial, clerical, and other technical services staff that are in our district. So, beginning September the 6th, this new program will provide early learning opportunities for three and four-year-old children while also supporting the recruitment and retention of our classified staff with the goal of maintaining operations as well as continuity of district services. As you know, the COVID-19 pandemic has affected both of those areas. And let me be clear, I think that this program serves as a model. It serves as a model for other businesses, other organizations that are struggling with staffing shortages. I think this is also presents an opportunity for our community to look for more creative and more innovative approaches like this that will expand our high-quality early childhood opportunities and also assisting with recruiting and retention. We can post all of the now hiring signs in the ground throughout this city. We can post web hiring postings on our website and social media. We really wanted to be innovative in this approach in terms of looking at barriers, potential barriers to why maybe some of our current classified staff decides to leave us, or maybe a barrier to new staff that are looking for employment but certainly knows that childhood is an area that they need to address. And so, the District included $955,000 of its ESR III application to support two additional early childhood classrooms at Kennedy Early Childhood Center. These classrooms will serve the preschool-aged children of our classified staff from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and provide enrichment before and after school from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., and again from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. We'll also provide enrichment on Wednesdays from 7:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. As you know, ESR funds will support us in staffing the program, again with two certified teachers, an enrichment coach, and four instructional paraeducators. These funds will also provide curriculum, classroom furniture, supplies and material as well as any facility modifications required for licensure. Due to the limitations on when our ESR funds may be used, the District will offer this benefit to new and existing classified staff during the current '22-'23 school year and the next school year unless we find a permanent source for funding to continue this program. And I will say, I have personally put my name on the list to Secretary Cardona to advocate for an extension on the spending of ESR funds through 2026. Again, that is indeed left up to the United States Department of Education. So, I wanted to start off with just sharing some good news for our classified staff. Again, we struggle to hire and retain classified staff, and we do believe that this is addressing a barrier for our staffing, but also provides us an opportunity to get those early learners in a little bit early, which we know will be Lawrence Public Schools students. And so, to provide them with these kindergarten readiness skills, it's definitely a win-win for our staff and for our young scholars. I think that deserves a round of applause. Have more good news to share. During our all-staff WebEx Welcome last week, this was our online version of our fall convocation, I announced that the District will also use ESR funds to double our current staff retention incentive payment plan this year. And so, instead of receiving three payments of $500 for their continued employment to the District, staff this year are eligible to receive three payments of $1,000 each. Tolling this year and last year's payments, that's a total of about $4,500 in retention incentive pay that's available to all returning employees who continue their loyal employment to our team. And $3,000 in incentive payment for new staff remaining with us throughout this school year. I mentioned at our live WebEx Welcome that, again, was our fall convocation that was moved online. This was in response to staff concerns for, obviously, COVID, but also needing more time in their buildings. And so, I also want to thank Board President Kimball for sharing remarks, LHS Senior Jackson Green, and LVS Senior Zane Akoya did an amazing job emceeing and hosting that event. Emerson Hoffzalis got the thumbs up on that, I've been practicing that. Our current LEA interim president, Tatiana Younger, who's representing PAL CWA, and our amazing LPS communications and our IT team to put together an online virtual convocation where all school buildings were remoted in was truly remarkable, and they did it without a hiccup. So, kudos and thank you to our IT team as well as our communications staff. On that day, PAL CWA also hosted a breakfast meeting for, I'm sorry, at seven of our school sites for all classified staff. This was immediately following the District's live WebEx Welcome, and that was a new opportunity for support staff to just mingle and enjoy breakfast and a little bit of time together before their first day of full duty. My congratulations to Lawrence Lions Alumni Association on the announcement that it's returning its annual Hall of Honor induction ceremony. It's back from hiatus due to COVID. So, that ceremony will be held at 2:00 p.m. on Sunday afternoon, September the 25th, in the Lawrence High Cafeteria Commons. This year's inductees are Michael Gottlieb, who's class of 1995. He's an attorney and a partner at Woke, Farr, and Gallagher LLC in Washington, D.C. Brienne Foninstill, I think I got that right, class of 2006, is a chief political reporter at the Des Moines Register, and our very own current 30-year veteran, current LHS history teacher, coach, and club and international travel sponsor who retired. I say current, but he retired in May. Our very own David Platt. So, congratulations to these three accomplished alumni. Our community will have another opportunity to meet our Hall of Fame inductee Brienne at the LHS, I'm sorry, not LHS, the Lawrence Schools Foundation Education, Community Education Breakfast. This is always a great way to kick off the school year. It will be from 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. the morning of September the 23rd at the Doubletree Hilton. So, you may reserve a table or an individual seat on the Foundation's website. The District will host our last two sessions of our Let's Talk Safety communication forum this week from 6:00 to 7:30. This is Tuesday and Thursday night. We'll be at Free State High School on Tuesday and Liberty Memorial Central Middle School on Thursday night. We will also have a Spanish-language interpreter there that will be there Thursday night. And so, I encourage all staff, parents, Board members to attend and to complete the feedback survey that's online. Our communications staff has recorded the safety information presented by our staff and our school resource officers, and we also plan to share that video on our YouTube website. I also want to thank all teachers, support staff, parents, community members, administration, all of our community partners for a very successful start of a school year. You know, there are always a few hiccups along the way during these first few days, but it certainly will smooth out over time. Those long carpool lines, whether you're dropping off or pickup, those will get a lot shorter as soon as there's some time there that passes and some time for practicing those school routines. And so, I will like to reserve the last part of my report for an update, very, again, it's some more exciting news. Our community partners are here with us, DECA as well as Officer Browning. This is a huge opportunity for us, for our scholars and our families. You may have heard me talk previously about Handle With Care. This is something that we've been trying to get off the ground now, meeting with DECA probably close to four years now. And so, thanks to community partners, as well as our new police chief who's very intimately involved in this. And so, I will turn that over to them to introduce Handle With Care Program.
Hi, I'm James Browning. I'm one of the SROs, and this summer I had the chance to go to a national conference, and I heard about the Handle With Care program. And I was thinking, why don't we have this? Why are we not doing this amazing program? So, when I came back, got permission from the chief and Dr. Lewis to start looking into it, talked to the social workers at school, principals, and school psychologists, everybody's for it, and I found out DECA was already doing it too. So, we just collaborated, and then we'll let Lydia walk you through the PowerPoint.
Awesome. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. I'm representing both DECA and Engage Douglas County, which is a drug and alcohol prevention and suicide prevention coalition that supports the county, and we're the ones who are partnering to bring Handle With Care to the county. This program is a collaboration between school districts, law enforcement agencies, and community organizations to support children who are exposed to trauma. It was originally formed in West Virginia and has since expanded to states around the country. A little bit about why this program is so important. It's a simple, effective program that provides teachers with advance notice that a child may be out of sorts, ensures children are connected with mental health services as needed, and ultimately helps our children succeed in school. Key collaborators involved in Handle With Care would be schools, certainly, law enforcement, mental health providers, and community partners as well. The way that the program works is this. So, when a child has experienced a traumatic event, law enforcement and the community are trained to identify those children at the scene, find out the school that they attend, and send confidential communication to the school. And that communication is simply Handle With Care and the child's name. No additional information is given. From there, the school receives that notification, Handle With Care, of the student. At that point, the teacher or teachers who are connected to the student implement trauma-sensitive interventions or refers the student to a counselor as needed. Teachers certainly should be trained on the impact of trauma on learning to help mitigate any negative impacts of trauma on those identified students. And then, our role as community partners is to provide that support, so those mental health resources as needed, and training on both the Handle With Care program and trauma-informed care as school districts and law enforcement need it. So, again, this is just a quick overview of how Handle With Care works. We do want to point out that the notice Handle With Care is on a need-to-know basis, so it's only given to teachers working with the child counselors and the school nurse. It is not put in the child's permanent record, and school staff don't need to approach or question the child. These are some examples of those trauma-informed interventions, and again, we at Engage Douglas County and DECA can provide training on these interventions if needed. And then, this flow chart, which is a lot to take in, and I'd be happy to send this to whoever would like it later, really offers a visual of how Handle With Care. Oh, beautiful. You already have it. Amazing. So, it offers a visual of the Handle With Care process. So, that was a very quick overview of Handle With Care. We're certainly passionate about it, and it is being implemented currently in Baldwin City. We'd love to see Lawrence Public Schools adopt this program as well. We're happy to take any questions if there's time, or if you think of questions later, we're happy to answer them at a later time, too. Thank you.
Can, I'll just, I love this program. I've seen it work in other communities, and I think Dr. Lewis first talked to me about it in Philadelphia, maybe, like quite some time ago. So, I know this is an initiative that has been important to Lawrence and that everyone's been working on, and I really appreciate that you thought to come back and talk to the District about it and that DECA took the lead in this area. It's just a really great thing to be able to offer our students, and it shows a kind of partnership that I think is in the best interest of students. So, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
And then, I'm wondering if we can get the PDF, if this gets adopted, so that we can share?
Yes.
Of this?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lewis.
Okay, next up, the report of the President of the Board of Education. I have a couple of things. Just want to start off by saying it's nice to be able to celebrate good news with Dr. Lewis's announcement of the early childhood benefit for our classified employees as well as the expansion of the Handle With Care program to our school district and our community. So, thank you for your work on those initiatives, and I'm very excited to be able to share that with our community tonight. Wanted to also say congratulations to our students, staff, and families on the start of a new school year. Thank you to the adults in our district who do so much to care for and guide each of our students. Your impact is enormous, and it's much appreciated. Couple of activities since our last board meeting. I was honored and pleased, as Dr. Lewis shared, to help welcome back our staff at the all-staff convocation on the 16th. It was a lot of fun to see the enthusiasm and creativity of our teachers and staff at each of the buildings as we welcomed and recognized them to start off the school year. Lots of fun. We have some really crazy, amazing, talented people. Also, on the 17th, I enjoyed participating in an informative tour of Peaslee Tech with Governor Kelly and staff from Peaslee Tech and the Workforce Center and some district folks. It was really great to see Kevin Kelly be able to highlight the programs that are available at Peaslee Tech to both our students and to adults in our community, to Governor Kelly, and share the great work that's going on in those facilities. Finally, just wanted to give Board members a heads up. Board officers are beginning work on planning our next board retreat. We're looking at sending out some potential dates in October or November, and then we will probably schedule another board retreat in April. They may not be day, full-day retreats. We're looking at the agenda and kind of trying to figure out what we need to do and how to plan those, but we are beginning that. So, I wanted to give you just a keep in the back of your minds, we're probably going to spend a Saturday this fall and a Saturday in the spring on those efforts. And that's all I have, so thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public commentary, and we have one person signed up this evening for public comment. Would a Board member volunteer to read our public comment procedures, please?
This is Carol. I can do it.
Thank you.
The USD 497 Board of Education welcomes public comments and thanks you for taking time to talk to us about our policies and procedures. We set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. Patrons who wish to participate in public comment must fill out the public comment form so that district staff or the Board can follow up with you regarding your public comment as necessary. This is your time to share your opinions. However, public comment is not the appropriate form for making complaints about specific staff or students. If needed, the Board President or presiding officer of the meeting may direct that a patron's comments be heard by the Board in executive session in order to protect the privacy of the individuals to be discussed. Before participating in public comment to share a complaint, the Board requests that public commenters follow the complaint procedures set out in Board and district policy as appropriate. If you need assistance in these processes, please let the Board clerk or other staff or other district staff know. The Board President will invite comment on topics not included on the agenda at the beginning of each meeting. Comments relating to agenda items are welcomed after the Board has had the opportunity to discuss the topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The District assumes no responsibility and/or liability for the information shared during public commentary. The views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of Lawrence Public Schools.
Thank you, Carol. Our public comment this evening- Our public comment this evening is Linda Weinemaster. Please come up to the podium, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello. I don't know which one. Doesn't matter. Okay. Hi, I'm Linda Weinemaster. A child who is behind reading skills at the end of first grade has a greater chance of never catching up without intensive intervention. Research-based intensive explicitmatic phonics instruction taught using multisensory concept, hear it, say it, say it, read it, write it, in isolation. I've got to get my glasses on, sorry. In isolation, not within the context of a word, is the best way to teach reading and writing. Samuel Orton, a neuropathologist, studied the functioning of the brain for language development for written communication. His studies found other reading instructions failed to establish appropriate cerebral organization to support the association of visual words with their spoken forms. In 1993, my first-grade son was not learning to read with the whole language eclectic curriculum taught in most schools today. In February of 1994, the school suggested a special education assessment. We said, "No, thank you," and enrolled him in a school who specialized in reading skills, using one of Orton's coded systems, Spalding. The first day of school, he learned single-letter sounds and wrote those letters within the face of the clock with perfect letter formation. By the third day, he was reading decodable text. At the end of first grade, he was reading on a third-grade, seventh-month level. I was determined to spread the knowledge I learned watching my son and during my certification as a Spalding instructor. I worked with the National Right to Read Foundation as the Nebraska State Director. My goal to start a back-to-basic school was realized when the doors opened to the first Spalding program within Omaha Millard Public Schools in 1995. I was asked to help with the reading and writing standards for the state and, I lost my thought, oh, okay. Former Special Education Director and Assistant Superintendent of USD 497, Dr. Doug Eiger, went to visit the Core Academy nearly 20 years ago. He was impressed. He said, "The kindergartners are doing third-grade work. The third graders are doing sixth-grade work, and the fifth graders are doing high school work." He wanted to have the reading specialists trained in Spalding, and I would have been happy to train them. With Spalding, a child needs to memorize 70 sound-symbol relationships, 30 rules of spellings to master our coded language. A child taught implicit phonics, whole-word memorization, and sight words cannot possibly compete with a child taught with systematic phonics. A recent Free State graduate was a valedictorian, and I taught her to read, as well as my son passing out of six hours of, I think it was cum laude, with Latin at KU in 10th grade at Free State. I don't know why everybody is so afraid of these, but this is all I teach. This is a, we book print, this is how we write it. We start at two on the clock, go all the way around, and we do all of the different, it's very simple, but there's kids in this town that need it.
I appreciate your comment, but your time is up. Thank you very much for being here.
I have to put my glasses on to begin with.
Okay, we'll move on to board commentary. No? Board commentary? Okay. Paula, yes.
Carol, where are you going to go? I'll make it quick. I just want to say how excited I am for the free early childhood benefit for classified staff, and also for bringing in the Handle With Care. That was the first time I've been introduced to that, so I'm excited to see how that works out and how we can be supportive of that. So over the last few weeks, a couple of weeks, I have attended LEA negotiations, the Policy Committee, the District Site Council, and also attended the virtual USD 497 convocation. I just want to express how exciting it was to be, to watching the schools, just be excited about the school year. And I also attended the Haskell and the Nation University Student Welcome. So we did get an invite from Dr. Gipp about attending Haskell welcoming students event. It was well-attended, well-attended by Haskell students, and also lots of resources, lots of resources possibly, potentially for our students here in a connection. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Carol, did you have commentary? Thank you.
Yes, I just want to piggyback that there was a great attendance at the Student Welcome Back picnic, and I was able to participate in the Global Alliance for Education of Nations program, not this Saturday, but last Saturday, but I'm sorry. But I was excited because I was in the Curriculum Transformation Committee with state board members, Janet Ma and Janet Wa. And the topic of discussion was the need for to implement indigenous languages as we look towards expanding world languages. So that's something that we are working on in the Kansas City Public Schools, along with the Global Alliance for Education of Nations, as that applies to Kansas and both Missouri schools. So that's something that's really exciting that's happening there as they work to implement their strategic plan, and it can mirror ours here. So that's all I have. It's pretty exciting because we're looking at implementing Cherokee language in the Kansas City Public Schools. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We'll move on then to our first item of old business this evening, which is a Needs Assessment and State Assessment Review with Patrick Kelly, our Chief Academic Officer.
Do you consent?
Oh, gosh, okay. I did it, I did it. I skipped right over it. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
He does have a question.
Yeah, moving it along. Okay, first, we got to do the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are those that are considered routine and are adopted by one motion unless any board member or the superintendent requests that an item be removed. The item or items removed are voted on separately. And I believe we have, go ahead, Kay.
Yes, I moved the board, adopt the items listed on the Consent Agenda item with the exception of 3.8. That will be discussed in new business.
Okay. Thank you. So we're going to pull, yes, this motion, we're going to pull 3.8 Montessori Full Pay Fee and put it under New Business. Is there a second?
This is Carol. I second.
Van?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, we did our important business there. Sorry about that. Okay, now we'll do old business with Patrick Kelly, and my apologies, Patrick. Thank you.
Hello again. I'm Patrick Kelly, Chief Academic Officer, and we're going to talk about school improvement and KSA 721163, which is the Needs Assessment that's required now by law. When I was here in June, we walked through sort of the steps that we were going to take on complying with 721163. Here is a quick overview of some of the things that we need to do in order to comply with it. I won't read that to you. You've looked at it already. You are already doing quite a bit of strategic planning and Needs Assessment, so I thought I would recap for you what you did in 2021, which would count as looking at Needs Assessments. All that you see there in orange is our strategic plan initiatives, so thinking about all the areas that we work on. And you started working on budget in November 29, 2021. I'm going to warn you before I show you the next slide of what you did in 2022. I don't want to re-traumatize you, but here are the lists of meetings that we covered budget updates in 2022, and also those meetings that we talked about parts of the strategic plan. You'll see the KISA Education System Accreditation Report, and in July, we did the State Assessment Report. So this is work that you've been involved with all along. A lot of the things you're going to see from the building Needs Assessments are going to be things you've heard before, but the law does require you to take all this in mind before approving your budget. So, key to the building Needs Assessment is that each attendant center should evaluate their Needs Assessment through the district procedures and submit it to district leadership for consideration. Our buildings look at their state assessment data at summer institute, so they've seen that. The state has not published that yet, so we're not publishing any documents yet about that, but buildings have looked at that in setting their goals. You will find in the report that you have in your packet, building goals for every building in our district on four of the strategic plan areas. You will also find links to the accountability report for 2020-21, which includes data like this on state assessments, and a link to the building report card for each building. You'll also find answers to these questions. We're going to go over some summary of each of how our buildings answered to these here in just a minute, so I won't go through each question individually. Again, we covered all of these in June. This includes the Rose capacities, which I know you're familiar with because the Rose capacities were part of that court case about were they funding appropriately to the Rose capacities. So those are in there as well. I want to stop there before I start summarizing responses. Any questions so far? So the first question we ask buildings to respond to is after they look at their state assessment data, what steps are they taking for all students to maximize their scores? All buildings are looking at assessments, and that includes a wide variety of assessments. We're seeing that they're looking at what we call the Kansas Assessment Program, sometimes called state assessments. They're looking at district common assessments. They're looking at common informative assessments, which are typically made at the building level, as academic information. They're looking at FastBridge as well for academic information. They're looking at social and emotional learning through SRSSIE, which is a screener that we use, and our new Saber Screeners, which is part of FastBridge. So they're looking at lots of data and gathering in their professional learning communities to talk about what do we want kids to know, what do they know, and what do we want to do if they don't know it? And also, that fourth question we've added is how does equity play a role in, as we think about preparing our kids for their future? They talk about this with not just their PLCs, but also their mental health teams, their building leadership teams, their CI3T teams. Our buildings are well-focused on helping students attain their state assessment scores. And in their responses, you'll see specific strategies referenced, such as AVID, co-teaching at the high school for special education students in ESOL, extended class time. Title services are referenced in there, and also many of the great equity tools that we have. The second question we asked is not on the slide, but it essentially says, do they have targets for state assessments for their students reaching it? Almost every building said yes. The buildings that didn't were primarily things like our East High Center, which is for students who are older than 18 and still working on some of those skills. The College and Career Center really doesn't because they're working with the two high schools, and those high schools are setting goals there in early childhood because they don't take state assessments, so they're not setting state assessment goals. The third question is barriers, and there were some ones that were consistent, retention and recruitment of staff, I'm sure is not a surprise to you, neither is lack of staffing or class size. There was a strong mention of support for the education profession, how we grow to respect teachers, the roles that they have, our classified staff members. They'd like to develop meaningful partnerships with colleagues. That's, I should have turned that probably around. The lack of meaningful partnerships with colleagues is a barrier there, so having more time for collaboration. They'd like more intervention tools. You know, when you're struggling with a student who's not responding, you want a different tool. You want to try something differently. And then all the external factors which are barriers, so that includes poor mental health, poverty, including hunger and homelessness, disabilities, truancy, attendance. Those are things that students bring to our buildings, and it can create a barrier to getting them to those goals.
One of the things, this is Kay, one of the things I was seeing in the summary responses that is not on the list that kind of sang out was lack of time to learn the tools.
Yep.
It seemed like it was like over and over and over again.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Kay, because that is in there in like what budget actions. They'd like to see, and professional development came up a lot. So you're right, that lack of time should be on there. This question they're asking, what budget actions, recommendations on reallocation of resources that should be taken to address and remove barriers. I don't think I saw in any of the answers a reallocation, right? Just more things they wanted. So I'll just share that with you. But professional development was high on the list, increases of staffing and lower class sizes, higher staff compensation for all levels, more special education staffing. Montessori and early childhood education was one that came up. Expanding AVID and learning coaches was on there as well. I want to make sure I'm clear here. I didn't include everything that is in that almost 100-page report, but these are just some of the highlights and things that came up multiple times. Someone else could read it and come up with some different highlights, but I think this is, pretty much summarizes it.
I think you did a really beautiful job of capturing it all.
Thanks. Do you have a question, Kelly?
It's like, you're always like reading that I'm itching to ask something. Thank you, Patrick. I do have a question. I'm trying to not interrupt people, I'm working on that. The day school is not included in the report. Do we not have to report out on them?
That's a great question. I did not think of the day school as an attendant center, but we probably need to go back and look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Would you bring it back to the board when you do go back and?
Yeah, we'll include that before your next, I'll talk about next steps, but I will send something out to them as well. Thank you for that. Yep, should have thought of that. So these two questions, one is the amount of time your building estimates it will take for all students to achieve proficiency at Level 2, above Level 2, excuse me, on state assessments. We had a range, one year was what one building said, they could get this done in one year. Another build's sending 10 years. I sort of estimated the average about three to four years, looking at all the responses. I think, I encourage you to read the responses by buildings. There were some statements about, you know, it's pretty hard when you don't even know what kids you have to make a prediction of when you're going to be there, and every year we get new kids in our building. And so to say, all students, and we should underline, all students to get to that spot is a real challenge, and it's very hard to predict. So I appreciate those principals stepping out, those building leadership teams saying what they do. Is every child in your school provided at least the following capacities, and those are the Rose capacities? We're about split. I will tell you that some buildings said, "We think they happen in the district. At some point, they'll get the Rose capacities, but not in my building at this time." And then there are some specific recommendations on things we might do to help students get to those Rose capacities.
Patrick, can I clarify in regards, because I found that to be an interesting
Mm-hmm, I did too.
question. When you had context from building leaders on why they filled it out that way, was it because, was it mostly elementary schools that were saying no? Because if you read through the Rose capacities, a lot of it has to do with stuff that you really think about our students doing in middle and high school, particularly around some of the civic engagement kinds of goals.
You know, it's a goal of mine that in every building, we could say, I mean, because those kids at the elementary level need those vocational skills just as much, but I think we may have to talk more with our building principals and our leadership team around definitions of those Rose capacities, what we're talking about. Because I think a lot of our elementary kids are learning vocational skills. We're just not looking at them like they're career and tech ed skills, you know? But teamwork is a vocational skill, good language use is a good vocational skill. So I think we have to unpack that a little bit more before we say, "Oh, we're doing well, or we're not doing well." This is the first time I think our principals and leadership teams have had to respond to questions like this, so it'll take a little bit of time as we sort of understand what that means. And if there are gaps, let's talk about them and address them, because I do think in some of our secondary schools, we even heard like, "We're not hitting all the social studies skills that we need to hit," and I think we need to look at that.
I could say that I, one, you know, just the honesty from educators and their responses was really helpful. And then just the fact of being able to read their perspectives as we are having discussions. So why, it is a lot of work. I could tell you, it's been pretty valuable. So why it is a lot of work, I could tell you, it's been pretty valuable, so, information.
I mean, one thing that is interesting is that the court case did say that they need to fund us to be able to meet the Rose capacities. So I think there's a lack of funding or state funding, you know, when they talked about those barriers, that came up quite a bit in some of their analysis. So I think it creates some interesting discussions for us. So this is now on the district website, all of these reports, individual by school. We have a new school improvement website that you can find under parents and students. The first link gives our mission statement, our vision, and sort of explains how strategic planning and vision and mission are a part of that. Then it gives you some background on our KISA system, our USD497 strategic plan that's aligned to those KISA goals. And then, in order to be compliant with the law, all the different schools' plans are there. I want to thank Julie Boyle for also adding those to every building, so you can find those on every building site as well. So our next step is, you have received this report now, that's part of it. You will read it and consider it, and we will bring you a motion at your next full meeting that will have language in specifically that you received the needs assessment, that you reviewed the needs assessment, and that the decisions that you're making are based upon the needs assessment you were provided. With that, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
I have a few things I want to say, but I want to give space for the rest of the board first. Thank you, Patrick. I know that this, as a new process, yet another new requirement from the state has been a lot of work. I actually found this very helpful, but I had some reflections I wanted to share about it, and it's along the lines of some of the things I said about this process previously. So I did read the 100 or so page
Thank you.
And I, you know, I appreciated our building leaders identifying what they see as barriers in the work that they're doing that we, that need to be addressed for students to meet levels three and four on the state assessments. I want to note, as we talked about last time, that the statute is incorrect in saying that students that are on level two are not on grade level. So the statute is wrong about what the state assessments say, but they want us to tell them what they, what we think we need to do to get all of our students to levels three and four, which is actually moving them above grade level according to Kansas assessments. So in order to do that, as you very carefully laid out, there's a lot of things that our staff have identified for us that are gaps and barriers. Recruiting and retaining staff. So there's been a lot in the news this week about the recent study that just came out about how teachers earn nationally 23 and a half percent less than other professions that require the same education level. That all goes directly back to how much funding you get from your state to pay your staff. In Kansas, that number is 22.6%. So a teacher with a bachelor's degree in Kansas can expect to earn about 75 cents on the dollar compared to someone with comparable college education and degree. And that article, there was an article in Edweek today, actually, about this that talked about how those findings have very serious implications for recruitment and retention of staff. And I was struck by just how many of our building leaders have said, this is one of our number one barriers to being able to do what we need to do to get kids to levels three and four. Then they talk about, a lot of them talked about lack of staff. They can't hire, they don't have enough staff. Well, as a district, we can't hire more staff if we have no money to pay those staff in the first place, so back to point number one. Class size, that is also a state funding issue. You can't reduce class size without being able to afford to add staff. And you can't hire more staff if there is no money to pay for those additional positions, and especially if you can't pay your existing staff what they deserve to be paid because the funding from the state is not adequate to do so. A lot of the other comments that are, a lot of the other barriers that our building leaders identified, external challenges, attitudinal challenges, the way that our state leadership is not, I'm talking about the legislature specifically, not Governor Kelly, the way that our legislature is not respecting and supporting the profession in the work that they do. And then this external failure to adequately support students and families in our state through policy, the things that you identified that districts have no control over. Students coming to school with challenges of school readiness, hunger, homelessness, disabilities, lack of reading proficiency because of lack of access to early childhood, poor mental health, trauma, decreased engagement, truancy, transancy, all of these things that our staff have identified as barriers for our staff to be able to do this work. Those are all things that the legislature has the levers of control over. We do not. So what I suspected we would see out of this process, and what in fact we do see, is that all of these barriers that have been identified, the thing that needs to happen for us to overcome those barriers is for us to get more funding from the state level in order to increase our teacher pay, be able to hire additional staff, and address some of those needs like class size and professional development. And I really just want to hammer on that. One of the, you know, when asked how long it's going to take a school to do this, one of the schools listed, here are all the things we need, fully funding special education, fully funding regular public education, and addressing compensation. And then they said, if such budget actions, those things that we need were implemented with fidelity as described, it would take six years for them to do this work. What they don't say, but what's implied, is that if we don't get the additional resources we need from the state to do, to address these barriers, the estimate is, it's not six years, it's more six years plus, I don't know how much longer. So I just really want to emphasize that, you know, this board and this district has stood ready and willing to do all of these things, to support robust professional development, to increase staffing, increase compensation for our staff, lower class sizes. I don't, you would not find somebody sitting up here who would not be willing to do all of those things as a board for this district, for our staff, for our students and our families. We just don't have the money to do it. And that is fully, fully in the, that's completely on the state legislature to make that happen. They've got to put those extra funds in because what we're doing right now is we are spending our money on providing those very basics of the classroom teacher, the support staff necessary to get kids to school, to feed them, to provide safe and clean classroom spaces, adequate curriculum and supporting materials for these students. That's what we are already spending our money on. So if they want us to do this extra work that we all agree needs to be done, and that we would in a heartbeat approve to do for our kids, they have got to take this seriously and start putting more money into the system. I applaud Governor Kelly for fully funding the Gannon settlement, but she's got to have a legislature that has the political will to look at the situation and say, you know, we're doing the bare minimum that the court is making us do, and we're funding it, but we are going to have to put more money in it if we want these additional outcomes for all kids. We are doing it for some kids, a lot of our kids, but if you're talking about 100% of our kids, they are going to have to step up their game. And I really hope that as we go through this process, we can continue to hammer on this point, because I think it is the most important point that comes out of this process that they are asking us to do. So, thank you for letting me have a rant.
Yeah, I was like
I appreciate it.
I was thinking back, I was like, man, I remember when I used to watch board meetings, because I was that, one of those parents, and I was like, oh, when Shannon used to do those things, now I get to sit down the way from you, so that's fun. So I definitely appreciate it. So I guess, you know,
Thanks.
I think that, like, in addition to that, so until then, what do we focus on, right? Because if we know that, if we know that running to go three, four is without resources, additional resources is a dream that we can reach out for, what can we do now to make the best of what we got? And so I think that's kind of where we get to the conversation, so I'll just.
And I would answer that, Kay, is what we can do now is continue to focus on our kids, our children, and focus on the things that's not measured on a state assessment, that's given one day out of a year, that students are not taking the same assessment every single year to try to get, to increase to level three and four. It's a different assessment with different standards. And so a lot of the things that are going on in this district that our amazing educators and scholars do are not measured on assessment. And so we are still a high-performing district in spite of legislators that are not coming into our classrooms, which I will invite any of them to come and have a conversation with any of our educators, any of our students, in spite of the lack of respect that many of our educators get, the teaching profession. I was having some conversations with some superintendents today that are 300, 600 teachers short, and they start school this week. And a large percent of it, we can blame it on COVID, but it happened before COVID. The lack of respect from our educators has contributed to teachers leaving. And so again, I would encourage many of our legislators, I appreciate our local elected officials, they support public education, but many of the ones that are crafting these bills have not stepped foot. I would like to, I don't know if I'm sure, I'll say this, they haven't stepped foot in our classrooms since I've been here. And so I would invite them to come and just have a conversation with us.
Other thoughts? All right. Thank you, Patrick, and thank you to all of our staff and building leaders who have put in the hours that this process has required. I think it actually will help us, maybe not in the ways that it was intended to help us, but it's going to help us. So, okay. All right, we are going to move on to new business, and I need to refresh my screen here. Make sure I do this in the right order. Okay, 5.1, Board Candidate Application Review. Okay. Dr. Lewis, it says that you're the responsible person. But I'm ready to go. Okay. So at our July 25 meeting, or, I'm sorry. Actually, you know why it says that? Because it's not on the right, I'm having all kinds of difficulties today with board docs, thank you. Okay, it actually says, I am the person responsible. There we go. All right. So I want to start off by saying a huge thank you to the community members who submitted applications for these positions. Just want to thank you, your time and your enthusiasm and your willingness to serve are very much appreciated by all of us on the board. And I know that we will have a good conversation this evening as we move ourselves through this process to come to a resolution. So to start off, I just want to remind the board about the agreed-upon process that we are using this evening and at our next board meeting, the specially-called board meeting, and I wanted to clarify this, just to make sure everybody remembered, our specially-called board meeting is actually going to be August 30 at 6:00 PM. We moved it because there is a back-to-school, a large back-to-school event at Free State High School on the 29th, so we didn't want to conflict with that. Okay, so our agreed-upon process, we received 13 applications by the August 15 deadline once we posted the position. All of those applications were shared with board members and the public when our board agenda went live this week. So the board members have had an opportunity since last Thursday to review those applications. At tonight's meeting, board members will have an opportunity for discussion of the applications and/or the process that they use to review them and consider their choices. Once that discussion has concluded, we will go through, we will have a voting process to narrow the field of candidates from 13 down to four candidates who will be invited to come for the interview, the in-person interview on August 30. To remind board members about the voting process that we're using, each board member is going to receive a ballot that has all 13 candidates listed. You will fill in the oval next to your four choices and write your name at the top of the ballot. As a reminder, these are not rank order votes, it's just your, these are the four. There's no rank order involved, and I think they're listed in order of when the applications were received, if I'm remembering correctly. Elise will collect the ballots from board members, and we're going to take a brief recess after she has collected the ballots so that she can tally the results. And then when we come back, she will announce the vote. That will include reading each board member's name and the four people that they chose, and then announcing the results of the tally. The candidates with the highest tally totals, the four candidates with the highest tally totals, will be moved forward to the interview phase. If there is a tie and four candidates are not identified on that first ballot, we will do a second ballot. And our agreed-upon process was that to remove the candidate or candidates, if there's a tie, who had the least votes. So say there's candidates, several candidates that just had one vote. They would be dropped off the ballot, and then we would revote and go through that whole process again. We'll keep doing that until we have identified four top candidates. And we will announce those results. And then the interviews, as I mentioned, will be at a specially-called meeting on August 30. Please note the date change, and those will be, each candidate will have 10 minutes in-person interview at that meeting. So any questions about any of that? Nope, okay. So what I thought I would do to help get the discussion started this evening, board members are welcome to share whatever you would like to share as part of the discussion. That can be sharing what criteria you use to evaluate the candidates and to try to select your top four candidates. It can include identifying who those people are or not identifying them, depending on how you would like to proceed with the discussion. I want to give everybody space to have an opportunity to share, and then, once that is clear that we've concluded that discussion, then I will ask Elise to pass out the ballots. So to get it started, I'll go first. I will just say that choosing four candidates out of this pool was a challenge, I felt. It's a talented and committed group of volunteers and advocates and community members with a pretty broad range of experience and background and perspectives. Before I sat down to review the applications, I thought through what would be the most important criteria that I would be looking for, and so I wanted to share those criteria. Probably most importantly for me, I wanted to see people who had experience in board work, either in the education field or elsewhere, because doing work as a part of a board like this is different than being a community advocate or being in the private sector, for example. So looking for board experience in board work in education or in another field, definitely wanted to see a demonstration of knowledge and expertise about public education policy or finance. I think those are two areas that are really, really important, to have some background and knowledge about coming into a position like this in the middle of a board term. Wanted to gather from the candidates' responses to the questions that they had a really clear understanding of what the role of a board of education member is in relation to the board, district administration, students in the community. Was looking for a commitment by those candidates to the goals that the board has identified and prioritized in our strategic plan. And then finally, a commitment to run for a seat in the fall was really important to me. So I reviewed all the applications, and I'll just share with the board, I think out of that, out of that group of candidates and using those criteria, there were three candidates that rose to the top for me very quickly. And so I will be supporting these three candidates in my votes, Heather Sprague, Amy McVeigh, and G.R. Gordon Ross. I will say that because this is a very competitive group of applicants, that remaining vote, I had several candidates that I, they all had good qualities, and I was really impressed by, but I decided I wanted to hear the conversation this evening before I decided on who I would identify for that fourth vote. As for the top three that I mentioned, I was really impressed by their experiences and demonstrated commitment to the district, their professional experiences. commitment to the district, their professional experiences in public education policy and communications and finance, and a really clear understanding of the work of a board member and how a board member's work fits into the overall, how that role fits into the overall work of the district in terms of meeting our mission, our vision, and our goals. So, that's the process I used. Those are some of the reflections I had on the applicants. Again, I was really impressed with the pool of applicants and just want to extend my thanks to everyone who submitted an application. So, okay. Who would like to go next?
So, there are many good reasons why someone might want to run for school board, and I'll share the criteria I use to evaluate the applications, which came directly from the Kansas Association of School Board guidance. And I will not share who my top four are ahead of the vote. Here's a criteria that I use to evaluate. I look for applicants that demonstrated a desire to make our district more successful by serving to support all of our students in the district. They had a passion for public education and expressed how they would use their skills, knowledge, and insight in collaboration with district leadership and board colleagues to make schools stronger. As board members, we are elected to look at the big picture for the entire district and not focus on a specific issue that is of personal interest to us. Board members are also, they have a great deal of responsibility for leading an entire school district, and our leadership impacts every single student, staff member, and building in our district. A board must also create an environment that encourages innovation and supports staff members in a process of continuous improvement of education. And it's important for board members to facilitate an environment of collaboration, coordination, communication, and professionalism. And those are the qualities that I looked for in my four candidates.
Thank you, Erica. Other board members? No.
Paula? So, the criteria I used for school board, for the next school board member, was knowledge around school board governance, our district policies, skills, civic engagement, volunteerism in the community to address the issues that they care about, and commitment to our district. Importantly, vision. I tried to have the same criteria for all 13 applicants. There were certain points where I questioned, I had some questions. So, maybe I'll get the opportunity to ask those candidates those questions. So, I was a little bit more flexible on some areas grammatically, because I'm not the best writer either, but I think I'll wait to announce, I'll wait for my vote before I announce. Thank you.
Carol?
This is Carol. I don't want to disclose who my top four final candidates are, but I, like you all, I looked at the criterion, but at the heart of it, I looked at the roots. Who would demonstrate their strongest roots and commitment to this community where, you know, I so love. I've been here probably the longest out of anybody. I came here in 1978, and I love Lawrence. I just want to look for someone who really, you know, has a passion for this community that I love so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Kay, you didn't want to?
I'm good.
Okay, you're good. Okay. Kelly?
So, I looked at some of the same qualific, or qualities that you all did. So, I'm going to talk about process. And I'll just say that I took this very seriously. I found eight candidates that I thought were interesting candidates. I was glad they stepped up, and I hope that they'll consider running regardless of the outcome of this particular vote. I looked at each question. I think this must be the instructor in me. I created a rubric, and I waited every question. So, there was points awarded based on certain criteria. And I looked at each question individually, read each one through as a, one single question, and then, a day later, went back and read the pieces as a whole to kind of get an idea. It felt like, you know, reading a student's paper without knowing the student, and that was a little challenging. So, I did, as Paula alluded to, try to give grace, where I knew that there may be places where the accuracy of the response was not quite there, but that I could see the passion was there to learn it and to really dig in and do the work for this district that the six of us are committed to doing. So, I really, I really do have a tiered system here, and I'm just going to say my top two, because they were clearly leading, and I don't want to leave Shannon hanging. So, I think she's the only one that didn't say. So, I'm just going to say my top two. So, G.R. Gordon Ross was one of my top candidates, and then Clint Ramirez-Stevens was my second top candidate. So, that's where I looked. The one thing I did look at, you know, that wasn't really explicitly asked, was how they talked about some of our strategic goals, and particularly those around equity, because that's been a huge part of what we've discussed in the last couple of years. So, that was a big deal to me, and I thought those two candidates did, as did others. But those were my top two candidates.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay. I'm going to give one more opportunity. Anybody has anything else they want to say? Okay. Elise, I think we're ready to have you pass out the ballots. Thank you. Oh, yes, Paul?
Never mind.
Okay. So, please remember, you do need to write your name on them, and when you're finished, please turn them over on the table, and Elise will come by and pick them up when we're all, when we're all finished. I'll kind of look and see when everybody has theirs ready. I think she's going to pick them up from back here. So, if you put them down here, so she can reach them. Thank you. All right. I'm going to call, Elise, five minutes?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I'm going to call a five-minute recess. We will reconvene at 7:17 for our board clerk to announce the results. Thank you. We'll come back from recess. Ready? Okay. So, you want to, you're going to read each board member's ballot first and then announce the results of the tally?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I apologize if I say any names wrong. All right. So, Shannon Kimball has voted for Amy McVeigh, Heather Sprague, G.R. Gordon Ross, and Clint Ramirez-Stevens. Paula Van has voted for Travis Tozer, G.R. Gordon Ross, Anne Costello, and Clint Ramirez-Stevens. Erica Hill has voted for Amy McVeigh, Heather Sprague, G.R. Gordon Ross, and Clint Ramirez-Stevens. Carol Cadu Blackwood has voted for Anne Costello and Alicia Erickson. Kay Emerson has voted for Travis Tozer, Justin Thomas, Anne Costello, and Alicia Erickson. Kelly Jones has voted for Amy McVeigh, G.R. Gordon Ross, Justin Thomas, and Clint Ramirez-Stevenson. Stevens, sorry. All right. So, the total tallies for each candidate. Jeanette Lynn Smith, zero votes. Amy McVeigh, three votes. Travis Tozer, two votes. Phil Rydel, zero votes. Heather Sprague, two votes. G.R. Gordon Ross, four votes. Justin Thomas, two votes. Lou Wilton, zero votes. Kimberly Beetz, zero votes. Trevor Bollinger, zero votes. Anne Costello, three votes. Alicia Erickson, two votes. And Clint Ramirez-Stevens, four votes. Our top four candidates are Amy McVeigh, G.R. Gordon Ross, Anne Costello, and Clint Ramirez-Stevens.
Thank you, Elise. Congratulations to the final candidates, and congratulations to everyone who applied. It takes, it takes a lot to put yourself out there to do this work, and especially in a process like this. It's going to happen at a board meeting. And so, I just want to, again, express my appreciation to everyone that applied. Please continue to stay engaged. Please talk with board members about your interests if you want to run for a board seat next year. Moving forward, it's, I know several of us have been happy in the past to have conversations with people in the community who are interested in doing this work, and I really encourage you to take advantage of that going forward. So, we will interview our final four candidates next Tuesday evening, the 30th, starting at 6:00 p.m. We will provide you additional information about the structure and process for that meeting later this week. So, thank you very much. Do any board members have anything they wanted to share after the vote? Okay. All right. Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next item is 5.2, the Montessori full pay fee. And Kay, you asked to pull this from consent agenda. Can you share what your questions are, please?
Yeah. So, I definitely appreciate the board in allowing us to go ahead and pull this agenda item. I had some questions as it relates to what we're looking at adopting. I wanted to learn more information about how this decision will impact subsequent years, like does this help with enrollment or being able to afford future classrooms, because I know that is going to be an ongoing cost as we are looking at adopting. And then, the other question is, you know, what percentage of families currently will this change impact? Or will it be adopted in next year versus this year? So, I just wanted to get a little bit more information about that before we proceed it. And ye Montessori.
Say that again?
Ye Montessori, because it's open now.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, thanks for that question, Kay. As a reminder, we receive full funding for five-year-olds. So, three- and four-year-olds that we do not receive full funding for unless you are considered at risk. And to be considered at risk, there are close to maybe nine or 10 categories that we look at to determine if you're at risk, and then we receive some funding for three- and four-year-olds. We have seen an interest in families that do not qualify for at-risk, but they're still interested in the Montessori program. And since we do not receive that funding, the proposal is to bring forth the current fee that's in board docs, I think it's 4846, is that correct, that those families will pay to attend New York Montessori. Currently, I don't think we have, we don't have Currently, I don't think we have, we don't have any that are paying.
Okay.
And so if you recall, we have a total of 60 seats, 20 in each classroom. We're right at a little over 50, maybe 51, 52 that are there. Principal Hallstead is still wanting to hold some seats based on past practice. There have been some late New York families that maybe have registered late, that may qualify for at-risk, holding some seats from those. But then also having an opportunity for those families that have completed the application that are on the waiting list that could pay. And so what these funds will be used for, and Cindy is working to create a line, I may be using the wrong terminology here. Similar to our student fees, this will be Montessori fees that will be paid, that will pay for Montessori materials. Did I miss anything, Cindy or Dr. Johnson?
Cindy, I'm sorry, could you please come up to the mic? Thank you very much.
Is that getting into question?
Kind of.
Sorry about that. Cindy Freck, Executive Director of Finance. Per the statute that allows us to charge for preschool-age programs, we are to deposit these fees in the general fund, which is where the Montessori expense is currently being charged to. And so those will offset the expense of the teachers and aides and the workings of the program.
Okay, yeah, that answers my question. Because again, I know that is going to be an ongoing, ongoing cost. And we're hoping to see it expand eventually. And so I was just wondering if this would be able to help with that, with those goals. So, yeah, okay.
Any other questions for Dr. Lewis or for Cindy? Ready for a motion then, please?
Sorry, got to find the motion. Just a second, everyone. You moved fast, Elise, you already moved it. Okay, so I moved, this is Kay. I moved the Board of Education assess a fee of $4,860 to full-pay Montessori students, which are the three- and four-year-old Montessori students who do not qualify as preschool-age at-risk. Second.
Hill?
Yes.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. Okay, item 5.3, new business, LEA ratification of the tentative agreement. We will welcome Kristin Ryan, our Executive Director of Human Resources, as well as Megan Epperson from LEA to the mics. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, yes, Kristin Ryan, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Megan Epperson, music teacher at Broken Arrow and also one of the co-lead negotiators. Sarah Resilien, our other co-lead, was not able to be here tonight.
Tonight, I want to share with the board the agreed-upon salary increases for both our certified staff and administration. For the 2223 school year, certified staff will receive a 1.8% increase. Administration will receive a 1% increase. I do want to thank the negotiations team for the collaboration and dedication to this process, especially as I entered kind of late this year and look forward to stepping in right from the beginning. Megan's going to share more information specifically to the agreement and the certified staff increase.
Thank you. There should be an official summary included in the board enclosure tonight that outlines some of the details of the agreement. So if you have specific questions, we're happy to help answer those. Just to give you a little bit of information about our ratification process. The LEA is the certified bargaining unit that bargains on behalf of certified staff members. We entered into the tentative agreement as of August 9th of 2022. And then in accordance with our voting procedures, we conducted the vote via Survey Monkey through all certified staff. The vote was open for this past week, from Monday, August 15th to 5:00 P. M. this evening. And so we are happy to announce that we have reached ratification. During this time, we do offer different Q and A opportunities for LEA members, as well as a robocall and several reminders to participate in the vote. So to that extent, we had about this historical average. And we hit that average this evening with having between 60 to 70% of the certified staff participating in the vote. Of that, I do want to highlight that the percentage that broke down for a yes vote versus a no vote. We did have one of the most historically high no votes this evening in terms of ratification, which we were kind of anticipating. While we are seeing an $825 salary increase to certified staff members with horizontal movement that provides that honor-to-education credit that we are extremely grateful for. We know that was discussed during the last executive session. The funding, as it was standing, enabled, did not enable us to also pay for a significant raise and vertical movement. So this means that we have now gone two years without authorizing vertical movement to staff that could benefit from that. We are in a difficult position where the way, and Matt Ellis and I will help share our salary matrix here soon. About half of our staff is eligible for vertical movement, which tends to correspond to years of experience. But half of our staff does not, because they are stuck at the bottom of our schedule, where they cannot move past that step. So because of that, and the funding that goes into paying for vertical movement, our team made the difficult decision to offer a raise to all of our staff as opposed to offer vertical movement to half of our staff. So because of that, I believe that's one of the reasons why we're looking at such a high no vote of about 23% voting no. Last year, when we had a salary freeze, so a $0 raise and only horizontal movement, we also saw about a 23% no vote. So it was surprising in some ways to see that no was the same percentage for both years. But we expect, looking at historical data, we would have expected that a higher raise would have corresponded to a higher yes percentage. So I think this kind of speaks to the importance of looking at certified salaries in the long term and the importance of trying to find ways as well to address that vertical movement, because we have folks now who are two steps behind. If I use myself as an example, I'm entering my ninth year of teaching here in the district, but I will stay at step seven, which for my take-home impacts about a $2,150 cut. Or not necessarily a cut, but I could be seeing that much more dollars if we had been moving in corresponding with years of experience. So we are going to be entering into the 2324 contract here in about nine days. We will start the IBB process again here shortly. And we are looking forward to some additional training from the Federal Mediation Services on September 15th. We'll be meeting with Stephanie from the Federal Mediation Services. It provides a free service where we can receive IBB training again for some of our new staff members. And we'll be able to begin that process this fall, so.
Yeah. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for all the work that you have put into getting us to this point. And thank you to the members of the board who are members of the negotiations team. I know that's a, it's an extensive commitment to be a part of that, that committee. And so wanted to express my thanks to board members and to our LEA representatives and our staff that serve as part of the negotiations teams for each, each group. So it's great that we can do this this evening. I am excited that we're able to go ahead and approve the tentative agreement. So unless board members have something else they want to share, we'll be ready for a motion.
I want to share, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not talking loudly enough.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm probably mumbling a little bit. Okay, well, I won't repeat all that, but I will try to do better.
Got the sum of it, yeah, thank you.
Okay, ready for a motion then, I think? Oh.
Can, would you mind if I, can I?
Oh, yeah, please, go ahead. I was just trying to.
Unless Paula wants to jump in?
Go ahead.
Okay. I moved the Board of Education to ratify the tentative agreement with the Lawrence Education Association and approve the compensation package prorated by FTE for certified staff in the amount of $1,048,616 and $55,897 for administrative staff. This is Kay, I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Can I please send my many thanks to our negotiations team as well, both LEA and district. See, this was, is one team. Definitely not where we need to be, but the work continues and I appreciate. It's always good to ratify, but we will continue to roll up our sleeves and, as you say, get to work again in nine days. Thank you.
And we're going to start that conversation right this minute, actually, because the next item on our agenda is a report on salary comparison information. And that information will be shared by Megan Epperson and Matthew Ellis, who are members of our LEA negotiations team. Welcome and thank you.
Okay, once again, I am Megan Epperson. I'm one of the co-lead negotiators for our negotiations team, and I also teach music at Broken Arrow.
My name is Matt Ellis. I'm a math teacher at LHS and member of the negotiations team.
Okay, so to give a little bit of history of why we are here and why we are here tonight, in having some discussions regarding ratification and kind of wrapping up the contract, the question came up kind of both at the table and away from the table of how does the USD 497 compare when it comes to certified salaries when we look at surrounding districts or even those districts that we would be more comparable to in terms of size and budget? So Matt and I, being some of those who really enjoy going into numbers at the negotiations table, decided to do some analysis. So this document should be available to you all in the board docs. And a lot of their, a lot of any here is also some hyperlinks and things for you to spend some time going more deeply into this document. We started with attempting to go after a one- or two-pager and wanting to get all the information that we thought was pertinent for sharing a comparison, meant that it got a lot larger, and there are also a lot of footnotes. So we will do our best to walk through pieces tonight to give this data information for you all so that as you're beginning to have different budget review conversations and budget priority conversations, when we're talking about compensation, we thought it was important that the board have a clear understanding, or the board and the community have a clear understanding of what these comparisons are looking like when it comes to salaries. For all of these documents and all of these pages, please stop and interrupt if there's any questions that you have or need any clarity with things. It is, these are documents and matrices that Matt and I are very comfortable with, but we recognize that that's not necessarily something that everyone else is as well-versed in. So the first page that we're looking at here, and for all of these pieces of data, they're all coming from the 2122 numbers. So this does not include the most recently ratified $825 addition. If you're not familiar with how certified salaries are generated here in the district, something that many districts use is called a salary matrix, in which you are plotted in a point on the agreement here for your position and your salary. So when we talk about horizontal and vertical movement, horizontal movement being to the right and left as you accrue different hours or professional application points, you can move the columns as you get in different hours. So for example, using myself as an example, just for ease today, I would be in a master's plus 30 column. So when I'm looking at plotting myself, and then the numbers going vertically, 1 through 12, 13 is max at the bottom, generally correspond to years of experience. We are not, we bargain vertical movement and horizontal movement annually. And so it's important to remember that not every year we have always granted vertical movement. There was a year, several years ago, that we did not do vertical movement due to budget cuts, and we caught the number back up. But as I mentioned earlier, I, for example, should be at step nine if we are following strict years of experience. But I am in step seven, because we have not done vertical movement for two years. Many districts do these steps different ways. Some of them have one step that is labeled 1 through 5. And so you stay in that step until you hit year six, and then you move out of it. Others have a step labeled A. So it kind of changes based on the district. And as you'll see when we get into this data, it made it harder for us to compare, but we did our best to kind of look through those pieces. Are there any questions about how to read this matrix here at first? Okay, well, it only gets more complicated from here.
So on this one here, this is our scattergram, and the amazing Sarah Hamlin helped us out with this. We basically have all of the numbers of staff that fit in each cell. And then she also provided us, if we were to extend this into an infinite table, I also have the data that goes beyond 13 steps, which was used to compare some of the districts that have more than 13 steps in the later document. So just to kind of as a rough, looking through the table here, starting out in bachelor's and first cell, we have 49 people. So that's quite a big number there. But you can see, as you move through the scattergram, we have a lot in the master's column down at max, down at 13. We have, we have quite a few, if you kind of read across the table, in that step 13 that Megan alluded to earlier. It's about half the bargaining unit is at that max step. Also, I want to point out that the number there, the very bottom right corner, is a little high. That's what we had back in October when we started this conversation. My understanding gets closer to about 940 now, due to, due to other cuts and things.
So what then I attempted to do was look at the certified scattergram and pull out the cells that were the most populated. So the ones that are color-coded here, when you go further into the document, those colors will correspond to the table that we'll look at. So for example, as we start to go through the document, you'll see that we analyze data for bachelor's step one, master's step one, master's step nine, and a master's step 13, as well as a bachelor's plus 30, step 13, and then all the way out at master's plus 60, step 13 as well. So what we were attempting to do is see where do the majority of our staff reside in this scattergram as of last October? And then we're going to use that data to dive more deeply into how a teacher in a neighboring district or a comparable district, how much does their salary compare in these exact plot points moving forward? So when you see the colors, this would reference back to these colors. And if you're navigating by clicking in the document, it should jump you straight to that area.
We also found the need, as we are crunching the numbers, to offer a max step as well, to compare where our max was versus other districts' max step as well. So when you see in the document later, max, it may be max, you know, 35 steps in one district and 13 here. Just kind of depends on the matrix.
Matt, I have a question about that. So can you share a perspective on how, well, let me back this up. So over the years, I have heard our matrix described as being very short. Like, you get to the bottom, you bottom out quickly. And that the rationale for choosing to do it that way when we adopted it was to max out our staff for purposes of earning, earnings in capers. So it only has 13 steps. How uncommon is that in the look that you've done at these other comparative districts? Are we like the total outlier to have such a compressed salary schedule? Are there other districts that are doing that?
Yeah, it's, I mean, apples and oranges doesn't even begin to cover it. I mean, every, every district is totally different. I have seen a couple, and when we get to the, another document, I'll be able to kind of show you just a brief overview. There is, there are a couple, I believe, that have a very, very similar matrix to ours. But you see some that go really far, have corners missing. I mean, it gets kind of crazy out there.
How many steps, is there like a typical, like how many steps are in one of these for districts in Kansas?
I'm going to totally spitball this, I would say 20, so I don't know.
Be my number as well.
Was that you?
Yeah, that was going to be my number as well, at least in terms of the ones that we've looked at. And as you'll see, we mostly pulled northeast Kansas, the surrounding area, and then Andover, Mays, and Manhattan, because it's our understanding that those are at least similarly budget-wise, I believe, or size-wise. So we wanted to make sure we had that data. Part of the question that we're also going to ask within our negotiations team is kind of how we want our matrix to function in the, in the future. Our matrices across districts often function the same way that budgets do, where, where you can see the money concentrated is what you prioritize as for, for a salary matrix. So when we go into further, like I'm thinking of Aletha's schedule, or no, Shawnee Mission's schedule, they do not have any options past like bachelor's step five. So if you have a bachelor's degree, you cannot make any more money after step five, and you need to take more credits to get additional career earnings. So that shows that that district prioritizes you moving towards a master's degree by creating a funding path or a lack of a path. So as a staff member, you're planning ahead to think, okay, if I want to get out of this column or not be stuck at this low number, I have to make a plan for taking credits or using application impact points to move correspondingly.
And we have this past negotiations session really done some deep dives into, is there a better way to prioritize some of our pieces? Do we want to, you know, highlight the continuing credits? Do we want to highlight the years of experience? And even going so far as kind of blowing up the matrix a little bit. We won't get into those details here, but we're just kind of trying to think outside the box as we go through this.
So, okay, one of the things, by the way, I really appreciate how the data was collected. I love the scatter, scatter was?
Scattergram, yeah.
Scattergram, that's awesome. Scattergram, that's an awesome title for it. So when I was looking at this, and it's really helpful to see kind of, you know, where the highlights are, and then I was comparing it, like looking at your, the other one that you had, that had like Andover, Manhattan, the comparison one, which was incredibly helpful. And I think that being able to bring together nine districts really kind of gave it some breadth of comparison, so I really appreciate the, the attention to, you know, scope on that. But the question I have is, so if we're looking at, for example, the bachelor's one, one plus, you know, the average salary across, not including Lawrence, it's like at 44K, right? That's still lower than what we offer, like for a bachelor's one, for example. Or the bachelor's 30-plus, the average salary, again, kind of doing the math, is at 57K, which, again, we're kind of lower than that. So matrix, matrix and all that, you know, included, how much does it cost to even like get us to an average in just some of those brackets? Maybe, you know, not being able to do it all in one push, but, so I'm just kind of curious how that works out mathematically, and if there's been any conversations around that.
Our numbers for certified staff member, certified staff members fluctuate every year, and we are closer to, I think, 915 this year. But in years past, just for purely, you know, eyeballing numbers, we have typically thought in increments of 1,000. So $1 million is roughly, roughly equivalent to $1,000 raise for a staff, for a certified staff member. So when looking at trying to close a $2,000 gap for a certified staff member, we'd be talking about a $2 million increase to the salary pool. Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And like I said, it's very approximate, but at least in terms of beginning to, to look at a ballpark, that's kind of where we have started.
I appreciate that, because one of the questions that I've been really trying to ask myself is like, okay, so what is our budget deficit for next year? What are we actually trying to afford in addition to what we're, what we afforded last year? And I think this information helps us get closer to that question. So that's it.
So I'm glad you said that, because that's a really great framing. That's exactly why they're here. So, I mean, partly why you're here, because we've talked about how does the board identify and work with the negotiations, the full team with LEA and with Christian Ryan and crew to discuss what is the goal, so that if we can identify that number, then we're able to make informed decisions, which we tried to do last year. We actually started looking at this matrix question last year, I think. Yeah, so wanting to take this opportunity to use this as just a touch point for how do we get there when we start in September. Is that, do you think that's a fair representation?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and Matt and I talked about this as well, that we were wanting to be mindful of not coming with a number tonight that we are asking the board to move towards, because, and being mindful of respectful negotiation practices, but at least wanting to come with data to show that if we are trying to be comparable to Andover, Manhattan, and Mays, then thinking, how do we live on there on the Andover, Manhattan, Mays budget, but also then be comparable and be, be able to compete with the Blue Valley, the Olathe's, the Udoras, the Gardeners, the Shawnee Mission, the KCKs, where our staff can easily commute to. So using another analysis tool to kind of look at where our certified salaries could be moving towards and what that, those goals might be. As we start looking through these different comparisons here, the unfortunate piece, as you're flipping through and looking at colors, if you're seeing red, USD 497 teachers are making less. And seven times out of 10 in this document, the USD 497 teacher is making less than those we are comparing to. So that is the not pretty side of this presentation, but I think those facts are very helpful when beginning to engage in those budget conversations, because it creates a better sense of a goal or how much we're talking about. The, I have been so appreciative, the last few years I've been serving on negotiations, because I have heard directly from board members who have said that we want to prioritize salaries. We realize that to prioritize students is to prioritize teachers, and so I hear that commitment, but then I also hear even our own staff say, well, how much is that? How much is a raise? How much do we need? So we're hoping that this can be one tool by which to look at, at least in terms of comparing other districts, or looking at if we're trying to recruit and retain folks to not leave, because they can see that I can make $7,000 additional dollars in Gardner, that's the kind of information we're wanting to, to help provide.
I also think, just as a side note, mathematically, this also highlights some of the discrepancies within our own matrix in terms of just the evenness of it. I won't go into too much detail, because I went too kind of crazy in the negotiations, I think, this last year. But for instance, we do really well at bachelors plus 30. I don't know if you guys noticed there, in that, is that teal? What color is that, maybe?
Sure.
Okay. That we do really well there. There's lots of green. But what you see we miss out on later is that highest possible step, because we're capped. And so if we kind of had a more equal table, we might see that some of these numbers balance out better. If we had a larger table and so on, we might see some of those balancing numbers come out a little better.
And Shannon, I think this kind of gets back to the question you asked earlier about why do we only have 13? The, the discussion that I know had happened before, I was at the negotiations table, is that when we had something like 25 steps, the end number didn't change. So if the, let's say the, the highest salary was $65,000, if you got to $65,000 in step 25, the idea was, we want you to get to $65,000 in step 13. So it took fewer years for you to hit the maximum number. So it wasn't that step 25 meant the numbers kept going, because at the time, the budget didn't allow those numbers to get higher and higher and higher, because when you start adding steps and increasing that number is when you really start to see movement costs go up. The entire certified salary matrix costs much more, and it makes it harder that when you do have new dollars coming in to apply raises, because you get stuck only being able to afford vertical movement. Vertical movement for us cost around $500,000 to $600,000 this year, and when the, the amount that was offered to, for certified and that was agreed upon was only around $800,000. So we can see how quickly that number gets eaten up when we're trying to apply vertical movement. I think when we start looking at other districts, their step 13, as we start to look at other pages, so like the master's step 13 here in pink, again, has a lot of green. Step 13 for masters plus 60 in the middle also has a lot of green, shows that we are decently competitive at step 13. But once folks leave, in other districts, once folks get to step 14, step 15, step 16, and keep going, those district schedules have kept their numbers moving higher. And so you see masters plus 60, their highest possible step, means that some of our, the staff members in Olathe, for example, I think at a step 30, 27, are making $20,000 additional than what staff here are making when they're working for 27 years in the, in this district. So that's when you see the huge discrepancies start to open up. And when we work with, and we hear from our members who are thinking about leaving the district, it's folks who are past step 13, who are starting to look at other matrices and go, ooh, I could make $16,000 more, you know, I could make this much more in my career earnings. And that's where we start to see some of the challenges pop up. I do want to note, just for anybody at home as well, that when we're looking at these documents, I want to be cautious in sharing this information, because if I were to take my contract and move to Blue Valley, for example, Blue Valley and many other contracts often have a required piece of their negotiated agreement where you are placed with, in the years of experience in a negotiated form, so they may give you credit for some of those steps. So it's not always the equivalent of me moving means I'll get that exact number of dollars. I may be placed slightly different, but I still think it's a valuable data point. If you have a teacher that stayed in Blue Valley for 27 years, or however many, we're still looking at some big discrepancies versus teachers who stayed here in Lawrence.
And I think on a similar note as well, it's important to highlight that this is purely the salary table that is published from each district. This does not include fringe benefits, things that are paid. That would be a much harder calculation in that, in that process.
I want to go ahead and highlight the career earnings. This was kind of the second to last portion of what we analyzed. So we, this was probably the most challenging piece for us to analyze, and if you want to see the specifics for how each agreement or how each salary schedule was mapped, each of the school districts are hyperlinked here directly to their matrix. So what we attempted to do was pretend to be a teacher in each one of these districts and map on their schedule movement through their schedule to the end of their 30th year of teaching. So for example, if we look at masters plus 0, what we did was pretend that we were looking at a teacher who started at bachelor's step 0, and that every year decided to take enough credits to move horizontally for education credits until they hit a master's degree, then they stopped earning credits and just continued to move down with years of experience. So we plotted that for someone who never received a master's and stayed in bachelor's column only, someone who received their master's degree during their career, as well as someone who essentially moved diagonal the whole time, which means they attained a master's plus 60 going basically diagonally. This is a very aggressive movement to go straight to a master's plus 0. For some of these pretend teachers, you would have to attain 10 to 12 years of, or 10 to 12 credits per year in order to make these column movements. So I do want to note that that was a very aggressive plotting for us. I'm not sure every brand-new teacher goes after 12 hours of credit every, every year, but it was something that was really interesting. We also added at the bottom of each one, the year difference. So if I look at the bottom, teacher sample master plus 60, just looking at Lawrence versus Andover, the Lawrence career earnings, if you had a master's plus 60, would require that you work 2.67 years additional to make the same amount of career earnings you would have made in Andover if you had done the same plot in Andover, if that makes sense.
This also assumes that every year you would have vertical and horizontal movement, which is always, you know, a tricky bit, too.
And we couldn't isolate, of course, for their own raises over the next 30 years, so we assumed an absolutely static table just to compare apples to apples as much as we could. And there were a couple of spots that we highlighted where, as we mentioned before, teachers could not access that point of the schedule because the district did not allow them to do that, and that was because it was, it created a priority for the staff member to receive additional educational credit and move towards that master's column, all of which we are open to absolutely looking at for ourselves, because I think it's a very worthwhile conversation to have. Do we believe it's important, you know, for Lawrence teachers that they attain a master's degree? Do we believe it's important that they attain masters plus 60? There are some districts that only give credit for up to masters plus 24 and don't offer additional credit after that point. Some districts offer credit for PhDs, some do not. So it's a worthwhile conversation to have about thinking, what do we want to prioritize for their staff and their further education for our students?
And I couldn't get away without making one chart, so this is not as helpful as I'd hoped at first, but you can kind of see the plots as we go through. This is the cost, it's kind of hard to see, but the, the salary comparison across the way, you can see they go up as you go across. Lawrence, I tried to bold in blue, it's hard to see there, but you can see that we kind of, you know, start a little towards the bottom, we kind of bounce around, and then at the very end, at that nine step, that'd be the max step, you can really see the discrepancy there. We finish really kind of dead last. So it, I think it's just kind of interesting to see that. I also did the same thing down at the bottom, is the lifetime earnings, just to kind of see visually where that falls. And I think it's interesting to point out that one of our districts that we're competitive with here starts out extremely low, but then ends at the top, and I think that's kind of an interesting journey that they, that they could travel on.
I think this was all we had for this piece. Matt was going to help share as well some information about the cost of different salary tables, because when we're analyzing these different salary tables, we're looking at some high, high maximum pay, like $80,000 for staff members. One of our questions is, well, how much does that cost that district to do? And is that something, are we able to move into a model that's attainable in that same way, or find some way of reorganizing our funds or prioritizing certain elements of our schedule, looking at cutting off different portions of it to prioritize different pieces? So as we have those conversations about what we want to look at prioritizing for certified staff members for education credits specifically, and thinking about what that should look like and the comparison models, so we know if something is, you know, proportional to what we're doing already.
So while we're waiting for Microsoft to verify, just to kind of put a little context to the, the table that you're going to see, what I tried to do is take the infinite scattergram that Sarah supplied and applied them to all the tables.
You want to clarify what infinite scattergram?
Oh, sorry, yes. So she was able to pull up, this would be years of experience. This is not the, where they are currently on this, on the table. I do want to be clear there. This would be where they would be if we were placing them at years of experience, because that was the data that they were able to pull for us. We have like a teacher, for example, that's been with us for 45 years, so would that be the 45th step, you know, that kind of thing. So I'm using those numbers, it is just taking its sweet time, isn't it? The other sticky point when comparing tables is where they have their hours chunked. We go in units of 10, and districts go in 12, they go in 8, they go in 6. I always rounded down. I felt like that was the safer number to give you the, the lower ballpark. So I didn't want someone that's in our 40 column to necessarily be in their 50 column or whatever it is, if they, if we don't know if they have that. So I would have put them in a 36 or something like that, always rounding down. Wow, that is tiny. So this is kind of the summary page, and I can go into as much detail as you want or as little. I'm also okay with that. You can see, we're up there in the green at the $50 million mark. Of course, compared to ourself, there's no difference. But as you can see throughout, if we apply our table, or our scattergram to their table, there's a lot of districts that are greater cost overall, that if we adopted their table, it would cost us more money. I don't know if that's my takeaway from this document as much as it is the percentage column, that essentially, this would be calculating how much the average teacher is making more in that district, if that makes sense, okay? So that percentage there, for just the elephant in the room, Shawnee Mission, 16%, the average teacher from our district would be making 16% more in the Shawnee Mission district. So that's how to read that data, okay? I didn't set out to say we need to apply $8 million more, right, to catch Shawnee Mission, as much as just to see that, that percent increase.
And just to clarify, the cost of the table is our estimated cost of what our table costs right now to, to fund, and then if we were to move our folks in their years of experience to those other schedules, how much money would that cause to fund, or how much money would that cost us to fund with that difference column being that kind of key point? I think it's interesting, thinking back on when we were talking about how much money do we need for raises, and we're talking $800,000 was approximately the raise we were looking at this year, being very rough, of course. If we're looking about moving to columns, Andover, right there is a $2 million increase to move to a similar salary schedule. So there are a lot that are rather attainable in terms of numbers that we have seen in the past come across the negotiations table. Obviously Shawnee Mission being a very, very high number, of course, but I think this kind of also helps take away the, the veil off of the idea that these schedules just cost way too much. There's no way we could move towards them. I think this helps show that we are able to start looking at at least what they're doing, and could we model and move our numbers accordingly.
And if it helps, again, I don't know how much you want to look at this, but here's just one example. So here's the Andover table. So they do theirs in a bachelor table and a master's table. So if you're in the bachelor's table, what Megan was referring to, you can only go to step 5 until you start accruing those college credits, the higher, the higher credits. Up to 32 was their max in, in the bachelors, and then masters went all the way down to 56. So you can kind of just see all the differences as you go through, and you can click all the, oh man, yeah, look at all that good stuff. Anyway, sorry, getting sidetracked.
So I have a question about that.
You didn't. Sorry, go ahead.
So, so like for Andover, they don't have a PhD column on theirs, and we do.
Correct.
Is it typical for districts to have the PhD or not have the PhD column as part of their?
I feel like I saw half and half.
Yeah.
It's like when we were looking through, just the ones that we were comparing, it was about half and half. I would be very curious to look statewide, because I think in, in more rural districts, you might encounter fewer folks with PhDs, so that may not be as much of a priority. But I think, again, it kind of goes back to what do we want to prioritize as a district, but then also being mindful, too, if we have folks that have attained those degrees, are there ways that we could provide compensation for that, as we also recognize that, you know, college credits have, have cost a lot more recently and make it a lot more difficult to attain those pieces. Part of that, that college cost and that college importance was also why we pushed to fund horizontal movement this year, recognizing that teachers, in order to attain horizontal movement, have to movement, have to, to put out a lot of cash upfront in order to get those credits and are investing in our students' education in order to do that. So we, it was really important to us to recognize that in terms of funding horizontal movement this year, which horizontal movement typically costs less. This year it was around $181,000 if I remember correctly, but usually it's 150 to 250 when we're talking about movement. Again, vertical movement, 500 to 700,000, it really depends on the year and who we have on the scattergram and where they are.
I have one last thought for you as we wrap up. I, I have to do my friend Tom on the negotiation team service here, he's always bringing up in the negotiation room inflation, and I feel like I would be doing a disservice if we did not. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, over the past five years, inflation is 19.5%. Okay? Over that time period, our salary has increased 6.3%. All right? So just rough numbers, if you're looking at the base salary, that would be a shortfall of about $5,200. And if you look at the max salary on our table, that would be a shortfall close to $10,000. So one way to think about that is that you're $10,000 shorter than you were back five years ago.
So I just want to say this is incredibly helpful, because what it does, I think, very well and very clearly is demonstrate in very real visual terms for people that the thing that we've been saying for a long time, which is our staff are telling us that they can go somewhere else and make substantially more money, and we're losing people as a result, and we're not able to keep up, is in fact borne out by the data that you are sharing with us. And so I really applaud the work that you did to put this together, and thank you for explaining it to us and sharing it with us so that we can understand and even deeper, at an even deeper level, what, what's really going on. And I, I think it's going to be incredibly helpful, so thank you so much. Questions or other comments from the board?
I just want to extend, oh, did you, were you going to, can I go?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I didn't know if you were looking at me or...
I didn't look at her before I started talking, so I didn't want to interrupt anybody. I just want to extend that, seeing, thank you for making space for this, to Paula and Shannon for making space for this, because I really wanted everybody, or Paula and I really wanted everybody to be able to see the data that you brought to the negotiations table. We knew it, I've seen these numbers other places, but when you put it together comprehensively, it's very helpful. And then just wanting to note that when we, when I was reviewing the applicants for the board, open board position, one of the things I looked at that I didn't mention earlier was wages, whether candidates prioritized wages. I don't believe there was a single candidate that didn't mention compensation, and I know it's a priority for the community. So as we move through the next year, and we're making challenging, you know, decisions or, you know, looking at our strategic planning to make sure that there's teachers in the classroom for our kids, this is a priority that directly impacts students. So I appreciate all the work that you've done. You're both amazing to work with, so thank you.
Thank you. And if there are future questions or, you know, things, if you want to hear this again, because I know it was so riveting and there's so many numbers, you memorize them all, if there's anything else in the future, I mean, we're both around, we're more than happy to, to, you know, come assist in any way we can, as well as from the negotiations table, so please don't hesitate, and I didn't mean to interrupt any further questions, I apologize.
You're fine, you're fine. Other questions, Paula?
I think for me, being the newest member on negotiations, that you all have made this process really easy to understand. And when I first, a couple of years ago, when I first was in the negotiations, in my, questions in my head, I was like, why are we doing it this way? Like, this makes no sense. But over the last year and a half, I've really been able to understand a little bit more about the matrix, and I really believe that's due to your leadership, Megan and Matt, so I appreciate you both a lot.
Thank you.
If you can't tell, we really like doing this, so it's not a hardship.
Our, our kids and your math classes are in excellent hands, I can only say that. Dr. Lewis, did you have any other thoughts you want to share?
This is, yeah, extremely easy to follow, and it's all the information that have, during my five years here, that I've been wondering, and to see it on electronic format, that it's just an easy click away, and, and always wondering, what will it cost us to get there? And you spell that out so beautifully tonight, so thank you for this, so definitely we'll continue our conversations.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Absolutely, thank you so much, and I do want to say thank you again for giving us the space to share it with you, so thank you.
Thanks for being here. Okay. That concludes our reports for this evening. Dr. Lewis, do you have any closing announcements for us?
Just other than the special call board meeting next Tuesday, and then our regular board meeting September 12th, we will have our, open with our budget hearing at 6 o'clock, and then our revenue neutral right at 6:05.
All right, great, thank you very much. Have a motion to adjourn, please.
This is Kay, I motion to adjourn the meeting.
This is Carol, I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.